Today I'm talking with Josh Bazey.
Bazey.
Bazey, who's running for city council in Ward Eight. So Josh, maybe you could just start by saying who you are and why you're running?
Absolutely. Yeah, so I'm a lifetime resident of Minneapolis, proud lifetime resident in Minneapolis. Came up in the Minneapolis Public Schools. I actually went to Lindell School, K through six, which is right there in Ward Eight. And my children went to Lindell School as well, which is kind of cool. And they're still in the Minneapolis Public School System. And you know, I'm a product of a working, single mother who, you know, worked two to three jobs at a time. And really, you know, my, the benefits that this city has given me over my life has been, you know, public school programs. I was a latchkey kid. You know, the parks programs, when they were fully staffed with team sports and such. And really was very much a lifesaver for my mom, who obviously was very busy, you know, kind of making ends meet. And, but it was a terrific upbringing here in the city. And this is really the only place I've called home.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And so how would you, you know, make your pitch for why people should choose you for Ward Eight?
Yeah, so you know, as I said, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a lifer. And you know, this city is really more than just my home. It's my heart. I love Minneapolis so much. And really, this is an opportunity to give back just a little bit to the city again, that's given me so much. It's also, you know, my family's home. My kids have been born and raised here. And I really, I really felt the need to, to get a bit more active. I've always been active on the community level. I've been involved with my neighborhood association, various volunteer organizations in the city. But I really feel at this point in time that, you know, this city is kind of proverbially stuck. And, and I can candidly say, I don't know if I've ever been more concerned about directionally where our city is going. And I say that from someone who lives very close to the 5th precinct. And so obviously, you know, we had some, some very serious things happen during the George Floyd unrest. And has kind of continued to be kind of a really tough place to be in many, many respects in my neighborhood and throughout the, throughout the ward. So that's really why I'm, you know, kind of deciding to throw my hat in the ring. I've also been professionally in business and labor for over 25 years. I started my career in organized labor, negotiating collective bargaining agreements, organizing underrepresented workers, lobbying on behalf of, of, of union contractors. And then the last 15 years, I've been in the business sector as well. So, you know, working on large projects, working with large budgets, developing processes and project plans, which I think is really kind of needed right now at City Hall, and something I could definitely contribute to, to, to the council itself.
Great. Okay. You mentioned that you're, you've kind of been in the Neighborhood Association. Is that, I'm in the Field Regina Neighborhood Group. Are you in something else?
Yeah, so it was, well, it's, I live in the Lindell Neighborhood. It was exclusively Lindell Neighborhood. I think it's Lindell and Kingfield currently. And this was probably about a decade ago that I was really super involved. I was actually president of the Neighborhood Association for quite some time.
Okay.
And, and kind of take a step back, when we first moved, when my mom first purchased our home in Lindell, we really became involved with the association itself, really to address some of the livability issues that were, that were affecting a lot of our community at the time. And, and we've really found great friendship and great, great partnerships with, with the neighborhood and the folks who participated with Lindell Neighborhood. So it's really been kind of a, kind of a home base for me. And really, I've experienced the power of community through that organization. And it's really foundationally where I think the greatest ideas come from, are folks who are engaged on a day-to-day basis in their community. And it's really inspiring and always has been.
Yeah, I find the Neighborhood Associations to be a great way to get involved in the community. I've been to meetings at Lindell, Field Regina, as I said, and they do some great work. I mean, one of the things that I like about Field Regina is that they're doing a big project of pulling up the buckthorn along Minnehaha Creek.
Yeah.
But even there, you kind of see how, you know, the government can be an obstacle at times. I mean, I think they had to go through three different departments in order to do that.
Right.
Because they're pulling up the buckthorn, but then they're also planting like native plants. And so everything had to be approved. And it was, it was quite a project.
Yeah. And I think that's a, that's a good example of, you know, a neighborhood coming together, a neighborhood association really being the advocate for, for their residents. You know, in a lot of ways, you know, in my time during representing Lindell, you know, we, we really worked directly with the city or the state entities and collectively kind of brought our voice forward as a neighborhood. And it was really powerful just not to be, you know, individuals, but really as a community, kind of bringing important issues forward as a neighborhood. And I, and I, and I learned so much from so many of my neighbors throughout the time I was there and still do. So I totally agree in, in the power of, of neighborhood, of community, and especially of formal associations really kind of battling for, for their residents.
Yeah, yeah, I really respect the people who show up and put a lot of effort into those. So when you meet with neighbors, I mean, what are you hearing? Like, what would you say are the top three concerns of people in Ward Eight?
Yeah, there's definitely a theme. And, you know, I've, I've had conversations with folks for quite some time. And I think there's the kind of three main pillars that the community would really love the city to pivot back to. And in a lot of ways, they're kind of intermingled with each other. They're very, very, very closely connected. One of which is self-explanatory is public safety. And really, you know, addressing kind of the day-to-day issues of, you know, concerned citizens and livability and the ability to, to walk, walk the streets comfortably and feeling safe. The other is, is housing and the lack thereof. And, and the challenges with that, also affordable housing. And a lot of folks feeling like they're being priced out of their, out of their home and out of their neighborhoods, which is, which is definitely a concern. And the other one is, is basic economic opportunity, you know? There's, there's so many folks that I talk to that would love the opportunity to live, work, and play in the city where they live, especially stay in their neighborhood. And, and the idea of that is really, really inspiring and something that I'd really like to work towards. And that's kind of intertwined with our small businesses and really encouraging the growth of those small businesses exclusively, and really becoming a partner in the, in the community. So I think those three main issues are something that, that I hear time and time again. And, and really, the consensus is, a lot of folks just don't feel like they're being heard. A lot of folks feel like there's, there's an agenda already kind of preordained or preset, and it, and it precludes them, which I, I totally object to. And I think, you know, folks in City Council are there to serve the people. And, and I'm a big believer also in consensus building. And if consensus says this is an issue, then this is an issue. And it's, and it's issues that the city should address. And I'll also say that, you know, my priorities and my vision is really based off those conversations. It's, I, I, I by no means have all the answers to all the problems, but I most certainly will start with the people that live in, in my community and the folks who will potentially represent at City Hall. And that'll be the foundation for, for my priorities moving forward.
So I just want to ask a little bit more detail about those issues. So I mean, public safety is, is to me, is not terribly clear-cut, right?
Yeah.
Because a lot of people have different ideas. So I'm wondering if you could just put a little bit more detail around, when you say public safety, like,
Sure.
is that more police? Is it more, you know, the non-armed ambassadors? I mean, what, what's the gamut of solutions that you think could help the city?
Yeah, there's definitely not one answer. There's not one solution. I think all of those things that you mentioned are kind of a holistic vision that I have. I think, in my opinion, you know, the police are woefully understaffed. And, and that, that's just from personal experience. For example, you know, we had, we had a neighbor of ours whose garage got broken into last summer. And, you know, the, he called the police and, you know, they weren't available to, to answer kind of a low priority, in their opinion, a low priority call for, you know, the better part of an hour or two.
Right.
Now, for, for someone who's ever had their, you know, property broken into or have, you know, have had that kind of really kind of intimate, kind of trauma with, with their home, it's very, very, you know, very, very powerful and scary. And, you know, with our neighbor, you know, it was a really kind of a tough experience. And that just as an example. Also, you know, I speak, I've spoke to some, some police officers in our community, they're, they're overworked too. I mean, understaffing means that they're doing a lot more with less. And, and I don't know how effective anyone is if you've been working 14 hours straight, especially folks who, who have a very, a very heavy and, and important job. So, and, you know, look, our, our city charter, you know, does require a certain amount of police, which we are woefully under as well. I will say too, that I would like to continue with hiring the most diverse police force possible. And we've, and we've been on that trend. I think our, our police force should be as diverse as the community that they serve. I wholeheartedly believe in that. The other thing I believe in is community policing. Let's get the cops out of the squads. Let's get them on a beat, walking a beat, riding a bike, meeting the community that they serve, understanding where folks live, and, and, and kind of getting back to how policing used to be.
How about on a horse? Should they be on a horse? I think they just got rid of the horses.
Yeah, I believe so. And I don't know, you know, how many horse patrols were in Ward Eight. So I don't know if, if I would have, you know, much, much skin in that fight. But, but again, it's an interaction outside of a squad where you can just have a conversation. And one good example of that is in Lindell, we actually did fundraisers to have our cops on bikes, off-duty cops on bikes from the 5th precinct, and just to ride through the neighborhoods and to be a presence. And it was by no means to intimidate or to, to, you know, kind of deter folks from, from engaging. It was quite the opposite. Actually, you had conversations with, with the officers in the area. They understood where you live, who you are. And it was really a wonderful experience. And we did that for a few summers. And it just shows the power of human interaction. Again, kind of getting, getting, breaking down that barrier of a squad car and really understanding the community that you serve.
Yeah, I mean, people are going to think twice about breaking into a garage or anything like that if they know, you know, there's someone could, a police officer could just ride down the street. I think in that particular instance, and this has happened to my neighbors and me, like, if you have a burglary or something like that, someone breaks into your garage, they just tell you to fill out a form online.
Right, right.
And that, yeah, that doesn't feel satisfying.
Yeah. And, and again, it may be minor to some folks, but when it, when it happens to you, it's, it's, it's very, very disturbing and concerning, obviously. And so to me, you know, there is no low-level calls, you know, when, when it comes to your own personal safety.
So the other one you mentioned was housing, another obviously very complex one. I mean, I feel like they've been talking about housing in the city for 12 years.
Yeah.
And, you know, the mayor and others are kind of constantly saying like, hey, we're doing better than other cities. We're produced, we have a lot more affordable housing. Rents are staying stable. But, you know, clearly, there's people on the streets, we could be doing better. So when you say that we need more housing, more affordable housing, how do, how do we get there in your estimation?
Yeah. So I mean, again, I've lived in the city my, my whole life. And actually, prior to my mom buying our home, we were renters. You know, my mom, that's, that's what she could afford. And we were renters for, for many, many years when I was young. And fortunately, we lived in, you know, in, in, in good buildings with good owners, and it was stable housing for us. So I totally understand the concern of not having that stable housing. I was a renter out of college as well. And that was in the 90s. And, and housing was scarce then too. And this is many, many years ago. So, you know, a lot of things haven't changed over 30-plus years. So in my opinion, it's really about the supply. You get down to, you know, the housing that's actually available, which dictates, you know, rents and, and mortgages and such. So I think, you know, we, we really need to focus on developing more housing. I take a step further too. Could the city invest in that housing? And when, and if the city invested in that housing, could we, you know, have more affordable units as opposed to kind of what's, what's mandated by the state currently? And I think that we could really pivot to a greater opportunity for affordable housing. Also, the equation of, you know, what's actually affordable and what isn't, I think, you know, we need to take a very hard look at. But there are many, many empty lots in Ward Eight and throughout the city that have opportunity written all over them. And I think, you know, as a city, we could be far more aggressive and be far more imaginative when it, when it comes to addressing housing, especially with those lots that sit vacant currently.
Yeah, I don't quite understand all the nuances of the 2040 plan and zoning. I do know that near where I live at 50th and Lindell, they're taking like, I think it's a double lot that one house sits on right now. And then they're going to build like a four-story apartment building. And so I just have mixed feelings about that. I mean, I want more housing, but that's a lot of apartments for a really busy corner.
Yep.
And I guess we'll see, see how it goes.
Yeah, I mean, Terry, I think, you know, really, this is another one of those situations where one size doesn't fit all. And, and I, I own a home, I own a single-family home. And the, and the idea of, you know, a fourplex going up right next to me is, is, is not, you know, ideal. Because it just doesn't fit within kind of the residential structure of our neighborhood. But I think we could, you know, we could focus on commercial corridors, you know, in Ward Eight. You can look at Nicollet or Chicago or Lake Street to have those larger developments. But I also say, you know, there's still a need and people still desire single-family homes.
Yeah.
So the other thing I'd like to kind of focus on as well is not just affordable rent, but a pathway to homeownership. You know, my mom, single mom, on a restaurant server's wage, bought a home in Ward Eight, you know? And, and that was, that was, you know, due to, well, a lot of hard work. But also the opportunity at the time for her to, to purchase. Now, you know, it was technically a red line district and, and, you know, a rather tough neighborhood. And that's why it was affordable. But it's the same home that I live in today with my wife and two children. So it's a great example of generational wealth as well, that everybody should have the opportunity to have, to, to pass on to their family. You know, hopefully I can sell my house to one of my kids for a million bucks at some point. And, you know,
I hope your kid can afford it.
The rest would be history. But, but again, you know, we definitely need to have a broader conversation about homeownership. First-time homebuyers, you know, collaborating with the state. You know, the federal, the federal government, I don't know, currently might not be so receptive to that. But I think there, there are mechanisms that we can get more folks in their own homes as well as, as homeowners, whether it be grants or, again, working through the state or county. I think that's worth exploring as well.
Yeah. I mean, when the 2040 plan first came out and they said, okay, you can build like a triplex on your plane, to me, that never was very realistic. Because first of all, it costs a lot to do that.
Yeah.
And I just didn't see a lot of people who just giving up their homes to turn it into like a triplex.
Yeah.
So we'll see. I mean, I think a few of those have occurred, but not many.
Yeah. And I think when it comes to the 2040 plan, and this is just from a resident's perspective, I think that a lot of it was very vague in the way that, that it was constructed and the way that was rolled out. A lot of people like myself kind of had this idea that we're just going to start tearing down single-family homes and building up triplexes everywhere, which obviously, you know, isn't, isn't appealing either, especially for folks who have been here quite some time like me. So, you know, clarity and, and actual kind of project descriptions would be helpful as well. And I think, and I don't know exactly where that 2040 plan stands. Currently, I know there's been some, some kind of bureaucracy involved with that as well. But, you know, the, the residents of this city deserve to know exactly kind of what that means for them.
Yeah, I think especially with a few things they've done, like, you know, they used the zoning laws to say, well, we can't stop like some of these recuperative care centers that are different things like that. And I think they kind of saw a little bit that maybe some zoning and some clarity, as you're saying, it would be a good idea.
Yeah.
The other, the third topic you brought up there, which is, you know, really key to a lot of people, is the economic development, particularly small business. We have a lot in Ward Eight, along Nicollet, along Chicago. So what do you think has to happen? How do we help? How does the city government help businesses get started and stay in business?
Yeah, I think, first of all, you know, kind of the base understanding that, you know, what benefits, small business benefits our, our community. And I, and I say that in many respects. Obviously, employment opportunities are extremely important for folks who live here. I think everyone would prefer to have a job within their proximity of where they live as opposed to having to take a bus for an hour to go to wherever to get to their job. So that's, that's really one thing. The other is just overall vitality of our, of our neighborhoods. And, and, you know, I think Uptown's like a prime example of kind of the, the bet that was not well-placed, in the fact that we bet on corporate stores. We bet on Apple, we bet on Columbia and all of the corporate stores there. But if that was small business of Uptown 20 years ago, they could, they would probably still be there. And the city supported that at that time. And I think we need to get back to, to really kind of locking arms with our small business owners and, and assisting them as much as possible. Also, not, not throwing up more red tape to, to, to operate their business. And I say that from someone who has a labor background. You know, I worked in unions for over a decade. And any business that I worked with on behalf of our, our members, we were partners, you know? And, and my job was never to drive them out of business, because what good would that do my members who worked there? Right? So it was very much a collaborative effort and, and totally understanding our common ground and what benefits the, the both of us. So I kind of bring that experience with me when it comes to small businesses. My wife actually had, she worked, her, her family had a family-owned flower shop on 38th and Hiawatha. So they had that family business since the 50s. And so I kind of saw the ups and downs of that family business, which doesn't exist anymore. But kind of on a personal level, I can kind of see, you know, the struggles and how the city should be propping our businesses up as opposed to kind of putting roadblocks in their way.
So one issue that came up this last year around that, and the fact that you have worked in labor made me think of it, was the Labor Standards Board, right? So the city council passed it, and the mayor vetoed it. He didn't think it was quite even representation on those. And then I believe the, the city council was not able to override his veto.
Yeah.
Right? So it may come back in a different form, with different proportions of representatives. I don't know if you have any thoughts on what would make that successful or if it's?
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, that, that's the council's prerogative. And I can only assume that there was just, it was just kind of an incomplete, an incomplete plan. And, and that's why it didn't, it didn't, you know, pass and is not, and not in effect currently. I also don't really, I don't really see the teeth in that particular iteration of, of the Labor Standards Board. And I say that again from a union guy. Our teeth was our collective bargaining agreement. It was our contract that we negotiated with business owners, binding in court. And I don't, you know, it's so for that iteration of that Labor Standards Board, I just don't see having that kind of teeth. And so again, either you do it, you know, thoughtfully and strategically, or you go back to the drawing board and figure out what works for, for both parties. Because the, you know, again, the, the end game is not to drive our small businesses out of business. That does no one any good. But at the same time, protecting workers. But in many ways, I feel like that was kind of a solution looking for a problem in a, in a lot of respects. And again, I say that from someone who's worked with business owners. I've worked with large corporations and sat across the table from corporate attorneys. And, and not all of them are horrible people. Actually, a lot of them are very good business people. And the good business people know that if they treat their employees well, they're going to have a good, they're going to have a well-functioning business that's profitable. And, and, you know, their employees can, can have a great career working there. And, and again, I've seen that in practice throughout my time in labor. And I think that perspective probably would have brought a little bit different spin to that conversation. But again, I, I think it was just one of those situations where it just wasn't well thought out. And, and just kind of something that, you know, really wasn't mindful on both sides of the issue.
So along that vein, are there any other issues that the city council has taken up that you agreed with, or that you feel like you would have voted differently? Is, I mean, you know, you mentioned like the city being stuck at the beginning.
Yeah.
It's like, where, what's causing that stuckness, right? Is it some of the things that they're, they're passing or not passing?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, a great example of that, Terry, is, you know, the, the most recent George Floyd Square development.
Right.
And, and lack thereof, where, you know, the, the city put an extreme amount of attention to and capital to, as a matter of fact, I think it was over $2 million that they, they studied, you know, future development of, of that area. And left it to the community to really get engaged and get involved. Actually, I was at a meeting for the People's Way at Sabathne a couple of weeks ago, talking about the development of that, of that corner at the People's Way. And it was really proposals from, from community organizations of how we, we'd go about developing it. And a lot of just spectacular, exciting ideas about, you know, a museum or a, or a permanent memorial dedicated to George Floyd and, and other kind of options on that corner. And the energy in that room from the community, and this was a community meeting, was electric. And the hope and the, and the light in that room of the potential of us actually moving forward in George Floyd Square. And what that would mean to the community was really, really powerful on that night. 24 hours later, right, the majority city council overrode the veto and there it sits.
Right.
For another year. So we'll, you know, the will of the people, and I, and I think the rough numbers were, you know, over 70% of the community supported a flexible street plan. 100% of the business owners supported a flexible street plan, not a, not a pedestrian mile. And I'll say, I, I support both, if that's the desire of the community. But the community spoke loud and clear and said, this is what we want. This is our path forward. And nine city council members said, yeah, you know, this, this is, we think this is better for you.
Right.
And I disagree with that. I disagree with that wholeheartedly. You know, current council member Jenkins has been, has fought tooth and nail for George Floyd Square. She's actually a resident that lives around George Floyd Square. I think she knows what's best. But nine of the council members said, we know better.
Yeah.
And I disagree with that.
Yeah, I wrote about that recently. I mean, I, I feel like there's some fundamental problems with the way our, our system is set up that, oh, some, you know, single-issue kind of very loud groups are getting sway over some of the council people. And it's just leading to choices like that, that...
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's really an example of ideology instead of ideas. Ideology instead of progress. Ideology instead of actual act, you know, actual action that benefits the residents of our ward and of our city. And that's what we're talking about, that quagmire, that stuckness. It's because we're stuck in individual ideology. And I don't, and I don't disagree with folks coming with passion and having real, you know, thoughts on, on how we, how we better this city. But if it doesn't benefit the community ultimately, then we have to, we have to, we have to have a larger discussion. We have to be able to find common ground. And we can't say, it's my way or the highway. Or I'm the smartest person in the room and this is what we're going to do, because it just does not work.
Yeah. So along those lines, the mayor's running again. So do you think that, do you find that there's common ground you think you can work with him on? I mean, it's clearly one of the big issues in this election is not just, you know, who's, who is getting elected to the council, but can the council work with the mayor? So are there common issues? I mean, do you think he deserves another term? You know, what are your thoughts there?
Yeah. And, you know, I think honestly, I, I can work with anybody as long as, as we can find some common ground and we, you know, have an understanding that, you know, I, my first priority is to, to the residents of Ward Eight. And I'm going to fight tooth and nail for Ward Eight. The proverbial pound the table for Ward Eight, that would be, you know, something that, that I'll bring to the table. And Mayor Fry, you know, on that particular issue of George Floyd Square, I think was, was... think was, was very, you know, articulate with, with the desire of the community. And I think he said the same thing of, you know, I would have gone either way if that was the desire of the community. So I think philosophically, I align with that, that, you know, um, the, the will of the people really is, is, is the foundation of, of how we move forward and, and truly the people dictate, um, what the priorities are for the city. So, um, but I've met with the other mayoral candidates and, and we've, we have common ground and common, common beliefs in, in, in many, in many of the same things. Um, so, you know, I, I'm, uh, the, the one bone, the benefit of, of kind of being the proverbial outsider is I don't know, I don't owe anybody anything. I don't owe any council member anything. I don't owe any mayor candidate anything. I'm in this on behalf of my community. Um, but I do, I do think that, you know, uh, uh, Mayor Frye has, you know, kind of held firm on, on, on many, many subjects that, that really kind of are at the crux of concern of this, of the, of the community.
All right. So the last, uh, question, I, I'd like to find out a little bit more about you as a person. So maybe, uh, just so that people know, like what's something that you like to do in the summer when you're not, uh, running for office? Like, how do you spend your, some of your free time or do you have hobbies?
Yeah.
You know, what, what gives voters a little bit of insight into, uh?
Yeah, well.
Josh?
Yeah, and this, this will be an interesting summer because I have two kids, uh, 12 and 14, um, and they're, they're both very involved with extracurricular activities. Uh, my son's a, he's a Minneapolis Miller baseball player.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, I've actually coached for the Millers for the last couple of years. So, um, uh, that's, that's consumed a lot of my time.
Oh, sure.
And my daughter plays MU soccer. So if we're not at Pearl Park for MU soccer, we're at some baseball field in, in, you know, Chaska or something and, 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 uh, basically my wife and I, we, we run our calendar through our kids and, 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 and we literally have about a week and a half in August that we don't have something going on, uh, for sports. So that very much consumes our summer. Um, I love every minute of it. I think it's, you know, um, especially on the coaching side, I, I love working with, with, uh, with young kids and, and, you know, kind of, um, working through, through their development and, and, and it just kind of, you know, it, it really kind of inspires me too. So, uh, I'd say that, that's very much a part of our summer. And if we can, we'd like to, you know, get to our, get to our neighborhood lake and, and hang out and, and, uh, and, and we're big fans of hosting folks in our, in our yard and just kind of hanging out in our deck.
Okay.
Yeah. And, uh, now that we were sitting here in March, I'm really looking forward to, to summer too. We just had a, a snowstorm here, so I'm, I'm at the point where I'm officially over winter and I'm looking forward to summer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just waiting to, hoping to see them plow our block.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like they've made a lot of progress on the plowing.
No, no. Yeah, and, and, yeah. And every winter, and maybe it's just the older I get, I, I complain about winter even more, but you know, I'm still here and, uh, my wife has told me every year, just stop complaining. We're not going anywhere.
No one wants to hear it, yeah. All right, well, that's, uh, all the questions I had for today. Is there anything that we didn't cover that you wanted to make sure we, we talked about?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd just say, you know, really, um, the reason why I'm running is that, and I'll, and I'll say it again, is that, you know, th- this is my home, this is my heart. Um, I have so many memories of this city and what this city's provided me. And, um, if there's any way that I can give back, uh, this is, this is a way to do that. Um, and I, you know, uh, even more importantly, I look forward to the conversations that I'll be having with, with all the residents in, in Ward Eight and, um.
Do you plan to go out and do some door knocking?
Yeah, a hundred percent. And I actually prefer that.